Okay, counsel, it is December 30th, 2024, 5:00 p.m. I'm going to call this regular meeting of the Berry City Council to order. I'll explain in just one moment. So to summarize, last week, as you all know, I called a special meeting of the council for today, December 30th, at 5:00 p.m., in accordance with Chapter 3, Section 303 of the City Charter and 2.6 of the City Ordinances. So it came to my attention yesterday that while the warned agenda was accurate, the heading at the top of the meeting, the agenda, read "regular city council meeting" and did not read "special city council meeting." So regardless of who prepares or warns the agenda, it's my responsibility to ensure that both the calling and warning of a special meeting are in accordance with Section 303 of the Charter and Section 2.6 of the City Ordinances. That was not done, and for that I apologize. However, it was very easily remedied. Because, so at noon today, an agenda with the corrected heading was posted, and then it was forwarded to the local media in accordance with the ordinance and forwarded to council members in accordance with charter and ordinances. So we've corrected that. So I will ask you, just for purposes of ending the confusion, I would ask for a motion to adjourn the regular city council meeting?
So moved.
Thank you, and thank you for your second, councillor. Any discussion?
Just a point of order. What is the minimum time requirement in the ordinance for a special meeting warning?
Four hours.
Four hours.
Yeah, and that was posted at noon.
And so that was posted at noon?
Yes, correct. So any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Thank you very much. So I will call the special meeting of this, this special meeting of the Berry City Council to order. But I'd like to begin this evening's meeting by asking those present, please join me in rising and observing a moment of silence in honor and respect of President James Earl Carter Jr., who passed away at his home in Plains, Georgia, yesterday after a lifetime of selfless service to America and to the world. So President Biden has issued a proclamation appointing January 9th, 2025, as a national day of mourning, and President Biden has further directed that flags be flown at half-staff for a period of 30 days from yesterday. Mr. Manager, if you could take care of that, we would be grateful. So with that, counsel, any adjustments? Yes, ma'am?
I don't, I guess this is an adjustment. I asked VC, V L C T, if you could resign from council and unresign. And their reading of that is that that is not possible. If you give a date, you cannot unresign from council.
So what are you suggesting?
It doesn't seem to me that Teddy could, could vote.
Well, if I recall, I don't think we ever accepted your resignation.
I am deferring to the lawyer. So.
Well, councillor Wazza's Act submitted his resignation. Counsel did not act upon it. Councillor Wazza's Act withdrew his, we issued a proclamation honoring him. We did not accept his resignation. Councillor Wazza's Act withdrew his resignation, but there was no vote of the council accepting his resignation.
I think the motion to commemorate his service was, in fact, an acceptance of his resignation. And that's what I would argue. And the unresignation happened after the official meeting was over.
Well, I'd like to give, as I said at the meeting, I'd like to give councillor Wazza's Act the opportunity to ratify his vote. He withdrew his resignation. He resubmitted his resignation. I'd like to give him that opportunity. You're saying that you wouldn't?
I'm saying that would be fine, but I don't think it's legal, and that's why we shouldn't do it.
Well.
It doesn't follow procedure. And I could forward this to you.
I would beg to differ.
I'm sorry, got it late.
I don't think I agree.
I would ask before I proceed that a majority of the council is able to weigh in on this, because I don't.
Well.
I cast my vote last week, and I was prepared to, and I did send an email to the manager, city manager, and the clerk rescinding my resignation and submitted a re-resignation for midnight on December 31st of this year. So that is where that stands right now. I did not see or receive any feedback from the city administration, the city lawyers, or V L C T. I'd be happy to look at what councillor Stockwell has, and I don't want to do anything illegal, obviously. So.
And I don't, and I don't believe you have, councillor. Would anyone for a motion allowing councillor Wazza's Act to participate?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Thank you very much. Councillor Guston is participating remotely. I'm sorry, I didn't mention that, councillor. So the motion on the floor is to allow councillor Wazza's Act the opportunity to participate in this evening's meeting. All those in favor of the motion, yes?
Could I have some, a moment of discussion?
Sure.
Okay, if, let's say that we go through with this and it passes and Teddy's allowed, and then we consult legal counsel, and they say that once Teddy resigns, or councillor Wazza's Act resigns, it's everything that he has voted on tonight, for example, is, needs to be ratified again because he resigned. Are we willing to take that chance?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
Will you repeat that one more time so I take it in?
If we can consult with legal about whether someone who has resigned and then rescinded their resignation should be voting as a member of council, and the, and our legal advice says, no, they should not be doing that, we will need to redo all, everything we vote on tonight.
Mm-hmm. So. Do we have to have a motion to that?
And if we don't allow him the opportunity, we could be, we could be not allowing someone due process. So I guess there's pros and cons on both sides, aren't there? Anything for a vote? Any other discussion?
I'll be abstaining from the vote.
Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
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 No opposed?
No.
No.
We have, so you, are you sure you would like to abstain, councillor Wazza's Act? Because we have a three-to-three tie vote, so I will offer you the opportunity to change your vote.
No.
No.
I'm not going to change.
Okay, no, no, just off, like I said, just offering you the opportunity. So the motion does not carry, councillor Wazza's Act. I'm still of the belief that you're allowed to participate in this evening's meeting. It's totally up to you.
I will participate, and I will abstain from the, I will not vote on anything. I will abstain from all votes so that if there is an issue with my participation, V L C T can make that determin, or the city attorneys, rather, should make that determination.
Yeah, so this is going to be a ton of legal.
Can I make a suggestion? So if councillor Wazza's Act's not going to vote, and he's not going to be part of the decisions, then I think it might be just, just that you sit in the, in the audience and participate that way. If that's the route the council's willing to go. I'm not seeing it that way. I mean, I'd like you to participate, but can't have it both ways, I guess.
So it becomes interesting if, in fact, you're wrong, and we've denied a rightfully sitting councillor the opportunity to, to participate. Boy, that would get really interesting in terms of potential liability.
Acknowledging that none of us are lawyers or parliamentarians, is there a ability to recess and call a lawyer?
I can try.
Oh, well, that's true. Attorney field.
I would submit that Robert's Rules of Order does allow you to withdraw resignation before it's approved by the, by the board and the council. And if they write the notice for the next head of working, we're accepted. So resignation is withdrawn before it was approved.
I may?
Yes, of course.
I understand Robert's Rules of Orders, but I think that our charter supersedes Robert's Rules of Order, and.
What section of the charter are you referring to?
The charter where, when you resign, you have to be replaced by members of the caucus of your ward, not rescinding and then being reinstated.
Mm-hmm.
That's the charter.
When you resign.
Right. And he wasn't not reappointed by the caucus or reelected to his position.
Yeah, and it would be interesting if he had not withdrawn his application, withdrawn, rather, his resignation prior to the effective date. Because contract law says that if you offer a contract to someone, and then you subsequently withdraw the contract and say, well, changed my mind, and I have until this time to change my mind. I mean, he withdrew it prior to the effective date. And did you say that to V L C T? Did you make that point, that he withdrew it prior to the effective date?
I did not. I said that he had resigned, he unresigned after he had resigned, because the council meeting was the formal acceptance of his resignation with the date. So I can read you their email. I can't forward this, but, okay. It comes, it likely comes down to how the resignation was communicated. If they communicate, this is from the state staff attorney at the Municipal Assistance Center of the Vermont League of Cities in Town. Shall I read it?
You like.
With that helpful information? If they communicated clearly that they will be resigning, including the time at which the resignation will be effective, or at a specific date, then the resignation is effective at that time and date, and it can't be revoked. If the resignation was set to begin at a future date that has not yet come to pass, then I think they could communicate a revocation of that resignation, continue to participate.
Isn't that what I just said?
Maybe. The question is, so it's, this is weird, but the history nerd in me is really enjoying this. Because it is a fascinating parliamentary question. So it was sent, it was sent 15 minutes after midnight on, so my initial resignation was sent at 5:18 p.m. on Tuesday, the 17th, resigning effective 11:59 p.m. on Tuesday, December 17th.
But you withdrew it specifically at the council meeting, and I remember that. Oh, yes. Oh, yes. And I remember that because your comment was, so Teddy Wazza's Act day means nothing.
I did say that.
So thank you for that humor, because that's what resonates with me when you actually withdrew it at the council meeting, and then you subsequently sent an email. But it was clearly, we weren't here until midnight that night.
No, I sent it after I got home.
Yeah, and you withdrew it at the council meeting and said that you would participate in the future vote.
I'm not comf, I'm not comfortable participating without advice from the city attorney.
Yeah, and I think, if I may, just for reference, the V L C T attorneys provide general advice. They don't look, they may or may not look at our charter or ordinance. So in the future, if there are questions about legality, it's really important to go through the manager so that we can check with the city attorney, who's very familiar. And I think that this, it's unfortunate that this is creating a nebulous area, because, you know, we typically try to go through our city attorney first. The MAC advice from V L C T, because I've used it, is not always, they, they tell you it's not true legal advice, that you should always consult your city attorney. So I just, for the entire council, I think it's a good lesson to, if you do have questions on legality, you know, we have ways to get to our city attorneys, especially on timely issues, where we could have gotten a really clear answer if this had been presented to me.
Sorry.
So I understand the email that you just read, and I understood the email to say that if the resignation is withdrawn prior to the effective date of the resignation, then the resignation is withdrawn. And that is what councillor Wazza's Act did. Matter of fact, I think before the meeting had even adjourned, so it would be on record. And again, councillor, the reason I remember it is because of the comment that you made that Teddy Wazza's Act day means nothing. So what would you like to do, counsel? Recession while? Nicholas, any way to get counsel on?
I tried. I didn't reach the attorney. I can keep trying. I called and I texted. So I can keep giving him a shot, but he didn't, he didn't, oh, he's calling now.
Great. So just, in my capacity as a city councillor, I consider the city attorney's legal advice to be.
Yep.
The recommendation to me in my role. So I'm glad Nicholas is talking to them, because that's what, that's, whatever he says, that's the course of action.
Perfect.
So counsel, we will recess for 10 minutes. Sound good?
Mr. Mayor, do you want to mute the Zoom? Just so they don't have to listen?
I don't know how to do that. Sorry.
Tom, we'll have a Zoom.
Oh, we are going to miss you, Teddy.
Okay, Council, we're back in session. The manager has had the opportunity to speak with our city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. So, yeah, I spoke to our city attorney and I explained the situation. This, you know, understanding that this was a very rapid decision and not maybe having all the legal context, the city attorney believes that the city is in a slightly worse legal position by not letting Counselor Wazak participate, that as a, that we are better off letting him participate tonight because we could be denying him an appropriate vote on the matter.
That, I think that would end the discussion. All those in favor of allowing, oh, actually, that was, excuse me, we did vote that. That was a three to three vote. Would anyone care, would you care to change your vote? I had offered you that opportunity. You didn't respond.
Change my vote to a yes.
Okay, then the motion carries and Counselor Wazak will participate. Counselor, are there any adjustments to the agenda? That's what I had asked for. Under Visitors and Communications, anyone wishing to address the council regarding an item that is not on the agenda? I know it's really hard enough for me.
Yeah, I don't see anyone on my.
Okay, thank you very much. Counsel, we'll consider the consent agenda. This is the approval of the minutes of the meeting of December seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four. I believe you do have some licenses and permits.
I do.
Sir Counsel, would you mind reading them?
Certainly. For catering, we have Bloods Catering for the Darn Tough Annual Event being held on January tenth. Bevo LLC Catering for Governor Scott's inauguration being held on January eleventh. Martignette Company of New Hampshire at the Barry Opera House Burlesque Festival for January seventeenth. We have Quality Market or QM Stores, Inc., their second-class liquor license and tobacco and tobacco substitute annual renewal. And for cannabis, is that separate?
That would be separate, yes. Okay, thank you very much. And I don't believe you have any contracts.
Okay, right.
However, item D, Counsel, is to authorize the mayor to execute an amendment to extend the option for the Prospect Heights property from March fifteenth to October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, and you did receive a rather extensive briefing on that. Yes?
I have some questions about the minutes, and I also have a question about that as well.
About the?
The minutes, and I have a question about authorizing the mayor to execute an amendment to extend the option.
Okay, would anyone care to make a motion to approve so that we could discuss it?
So moved.
And seconded, Council hearing?
Seconded.
Thank you very much. Yes.
So for the minutes, on the first page, there's the resolution to declare Wednesday, December eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, to be Counselor Teddy Wazak Appreciation Day. And then it looks like, Cheryl, unfortunately, you copy and paste it, and it says to express to Sue our most profound appreciation, so it should say Teddy.
Oh, sorry.
And then at the end, it said a copy should be transmitted to Sue Minter, and it should say to Teddy Wazak. And then in the page where we nominate Counselor Guston to the position of the Police Advisory Committee as the liaison, there's a random Police Advisory Committee note in there about Eli Poa Mutini, and I think that should be removed. And then the, at the very end, these are the amended minutes. It says the next meeting is scheduled for Monday, December thirtieth, but when these minutes were written, the next meeting was scheduled for the seventh of January, so I believe that's what they should say, not for today. And then my question about de-authorizing the mayor to execute an amendment, I believe that in the packet, after reviewing the packet, there is, under the, on page six of the real estate option agreement, Tom Lozon signed on behalf of the buyer for Prospect Heights Development, so it seems odd to me.
You're referring to an item that the council has no discretion over, had no discretion over at the time.
I'm sorry, you interrupted me. So, the, Tom Lozon signed as the buyer for Prospect Heights Development, and it seems to me that he shouldn't also be authorizing as the mayor to execute this agreement. So I'm wondering if we could authorize the, what is the, what is your title?
Deputy Mayor?
Deputy Mayor or the city manager to sign on behalf?
Not unless you want to violate charter. Charter is pretty clear that the mayor has to execute documents relative to the city and real estate.
Well.
Now, if you'll let me finish now.
Sure.
So when this was executed, I executed this in my capacity as a board member of Prospect Heights. This is not a document that the city of Berry executed. Then this document was assigned to the city of Berry by vote of the Berry City Council. Now we are extending this agreement, and in accordance with charter, the mayor has to execute the document. If you want to authorize the city manager, I mean, if the council wants to pass that, it's not consistent with charter, so I'm not sure what you're getting at, that some sort of conflict, I mean, you want the full story? I donated the option price to Prospect Heights Development. I have nothing to gain financially from it. There is no conflict of interest, so I'm not even quite sure what your point was.
My point is that it seems odd to me that you would sign on behalf of the buyer and then sign on behalf of the city, and I understand your explanation.
The city is also the buyer, so it seems odd that I would sign on behalf of the buyer and then sign on behalf of the buyer.
I'm not sure.
Nothing inconsistent.
I'm not sure how you're signing on behalf of the buyer as Prospect Heights and then signing on behalf of the buyer as the city of Berry.
Because it was assigned.
It just seems odd to me.
Well, we have real estate, it's legal opinion evening in, in the council chambers. I mean, there's nothing inconsistent about it. There's nothing that isn't disclosed.
I didn't suggest that there was. I'm just, I'm just suggesting that maybe we have someone else.
And I'm just suggesting that if you want to be consistent with charter, the mayor, for whatever reason, now, I'd be fine if we wanted to put that in as a charter change because I've never quite understood why it says in charter that the mayor has to execute any and all documents relating to real estate, but that's the way it's been long before I got here. So there's nothing, there's nothing inconsistent about it, nothing to see here, folks. So, Counsel, I guess we'll, so there has been a motion, there has been a second. All those in favor, the motion is, is there any other discussion? I'm sorry. Hearing none, all those in favor, the motion is presented. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed?
No.
Thank you very much. It is noted, motion carries. Counsel, we're at item four A on the agenda. This is to approve the city warrants. We'll be ratifying the week of twelve twenty-five twenty-four, and we'll be approving the week of one one twenty-five. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Stockwell, seconded by Counselor Sean Bell. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, the motion is presented. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed?
I'm abstaining.
So noted. Okay, Counsel, we are at item five, new businesses to ratify the council's twelve seventeen twenty-four decision to pledge four hundred thousand dollars for the acquisition of one forty-three North Main Street by BADC, subject to a sponsorship agreement. Counsel, I think the way I'd like to proceed is, counsel certainly recalls, we had two meetings with Berry Area Development and executive session. They had a presentation that they gave, it was slideshow presentation, so what I would then subsequently, we adjourned that meeting, BADC came back to a subsequent meeting. I don't recall, and feel free to correct me if I'm wrong, I'm sure you will, I don't recall that there was any new information presented at that second executive session. However, BADC did ask us to exit the meeting and in a show of support, approve this motion. We did that, it was an unworn item, so I let the council know at that time that we would be coming back to ratify that vote, and here we are. So the way I'd like to start the meeting is by asking the folks from BADC to give the presentation that they gave the council, give that information that they gave the council to the general public, which is exactly what I said to you at the last meeting, I asked you to be prepared to do that, so that the general public, in open session, so that the general public would also have the benefit of the same information. Okay? So why don't we proceed that way? And then we can, yeah, and then what I guess we'll do procedurally, Counsel, is at that point, I would look for a motion to approve item five A on the agenda, look for a second, and then we would open the floor to discussion.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Counsel. I don't mean to turn my back on you folks, but it's easier for me to be able to see the slideshow. This presentation is similar to the original presentation I made to the council, but I've refined it a little bit.
Can you get to the mic, please?
I've refined it and enhanced it a little bit, and I think this presentation is as much for the public as it is for the council, but I'll just go through it. So you have sitting here before you tonight, members of the Berry Area Development Corporation. Bob Lord is president, Al Florrie is treasurer, I'm vice president, and Carl Ranker is interim executive director. What was put forward as a good for, good faith with the best of intentions initiative here is to address the most common downtown complaint that I think we're all aware of. It's the abandoned Newbury's Building or one forty-three Main Street, hence the name, the One Forty-Three Main Street Initiative. For this key end to get traction in my mind, through this BADC strategic planning process, one of the specific comments made during that process, and I think there was a consensus about this, is a need to tear down and redevelop. The Jacobs property on Main Street in Berry, the property has been vacant for years, has deteriorated for, from years of neglect and is an eyesore. I'd like to think that most everybody would agree that for the continued revitalization of Berry's downtown, it really is critical to wrestle this property away from the property owners who have it now, who are, have clearly demonstrated that they have no intent to do anything with this building. We've got to get it either into private control or municipal control, but we've got to get it out of the hands of the current owners. The owners have owned this at least since two thousand and ten, perhaps before, so at least fourteen, fifteen years, nothing has happened with that building. The property is assessed at three hundred and twenty-five thousand, eight hundred dollars. The owner has listed it for anywhere from one point two to one point four million dollars, clearly an excessive amount of money. Precedent for this initiative has been set in other communities, dealing with recalcitrant property owners who are holding up the development of municipal downtowns, specifically the city of St. Albans, and I believe also the town of Bendington. When I was city manager and attended city manager association meetings and also the League of Cities and Towns, Dominic Cloud, who is the manager for the city of St. Albans, faced the same kind of issue in St. Albans. They had a reluctant, recalcitrant landowner who just didn't want to sell or sell at a reasonable price, and his advice to all of the managers sitting in the room is, hold your nose and pay the price. And I know that, I know that doesn't sit well with a lot of people, it doesn't really sit well with us, but I think an effort has to be made to do something and not let this building sit there empty again for, continue for another five or ten years. So I had a basis for approaching Jeff Jacobs because when I came in as city manager, probably about two thousand and twelve, we had to acquire a property in the Enterprise Alley area for that development. It was necessary to resurrect and secure a, or execute a purchase and sale agreement for that, the old TNT building, which we did, so I had outdated, as it might be, but a working relationship, but I thought I had a basis for approaching the property owners. This was after having consulted with the executive committee of BADC and the entire board. So, and, and I knew it had to be a credible purchase offer. It couldn't be something, clearly, the city's offer of four hundred thousand dollars, which I'll speak to later, wasn't sufficient. I had no intent of meeting their asking price or whatever, but it still had to be a credible offer, hence the one million dollar offer. We have a five thousand dollar option fee, which if the property is purchased, will go towards the cost of the property. If it's not, it's not refundable, but BADC has made that commitment. The other commitment is that we negotiated a term of six months for fundraising. BADC does not have the money to buy this property, and that's why we are looking at this as a public-private partnership with the city and BADC, and it's important for the city's participation. The purchase price is a million dollars. We've got an allowance for closing costs, taxes for as long as we hold the property, and holding costs, an allowance of a hundred thousand dollars. So we need to raise a million, one hundred thousand dollars to have this thing happen. And BADC's request of the council is a four hundred thousand dollar allocation. It would either be from the Special Project Fund or the Eugene Cozy Trust, whatever the council decides, it makes no difference to BADC, and this is the same amount as was previously authorized by the city council in September of two thousand and twenty-two, although that amount was rejected by the property owners. I don't know if they even responded to, to the offer. In, in order for BADC to raise the funds for this significant initiative, it's critically important that BADC and the public have the allocation and endorsement and public support from the council for, to support the critical, or to support the fundraising campaign. This initiative has received unanimous.
Sorry, drawing people in.
Unanimous endorsement of the BADC Board of Directors. All fifteen directors have pledged a total of seventy-five thousand dollars. Fifteen directors have pledged seventy-five thousand dollars in donations, not loans, not investments, not whatever, it's five, fifteen thousand dollars, seventy-five thousand dollars in donation, and that's an average of five thousand dollars per director. So we have skin in the game. We think that's important. It's also important to emphasize that there are no local tax dollars being asked from the city. The funds that are being asked, if the, if the bequest, if they came out of there, clearly are not city funds, and if they came from the Special Project Fund, which is a successor, if you will, to ARPA funds, those are, those are federal pass-through dollars, those are not local tax dollars. So the council's public support by endorsement and allocation of the funds is critical to the successful fundraising campaign. I guess I probably can't say that enough. So the concept for funding is that we have seventy-five thousand dollars in donations from the, or pledges from the Board of Directors. We'll need to get six hundred thousand dollars of business and public donations. We'll launch a GoFundMe campaign, and hopeful that could raise twenty-five thousand dollars. With the four hundred thousand dollars from the city council, that would raise the one point one million dollars that we feel is necessary to make this happen. The ultimate objective here is to wrestle this out of the control of a reluctant property owner for sale, either to a private development developer or transfer to the city for a dollar, whichever, I, I think the city is probably the key decision-maker in that, in that course of action. If the city isn't interested in taking the site for a dollar, then we'll sell it to a private developer. And this concept is identical to the redevelopment of the City Place site, which was successfully redeveloped, but that started with a Neighborhood Stabilization Program grant, which was used to acquire and raise the Waylands Drugstore site. At that time, that that grant was used to raise that, acquire that property and raise that site, there was no plan in place for what was going to go on there. The intent was to acquire, to be able to move ahead to ultimately redevelop that site, but there was no specific plan in place. The site was prepared for future development. And look what, and look what came. The ultimate uses for this site, if it's acquired, it could be multi-use retail, an office complex, retail and housing complex, a hotel, I mean, the options are wide open, and that, to a large degree, is going to be a function of who owns the property as well as responses from private developers, just like the city has, has put out RFP for the Seminary Street project and got only one response, but all you need is one response if it's a good response, and you've got one, this, the initiative that we're proposing here follows that exact same process. The potential benefits, financial benefits to the city, the current tax revenue from this site is twelve thousand, eight hundred dollars. If a five million dollar structure were built on that property, which I, I think is an unrealistically low number, but if it was, if it was assessed at, at five million dollars, it would generate approximately a hundred and five thousand dollars at today's tax rate. That's almost a tenfold increase in tax revenue that would come from that site. So next steps, again, contingent upon council's support, we have a hundred and eighty-day deadline to provide notice of intent, execute the purchase and sale, that's probably now down to about a hundred and sixty-five days, thirty days thereafter to closing. Next steps for BADC, if the council provides its support, we need to prepare a donor solicitation letter, pledge form, donor solicitation lists, prepare a publicity and fundraising campaign, have a public launch, prepare a GoFundMe campaign, but those are the immediate steps that we see in our future. I think it's important to point out that this initiative is fully consistent with the city of Berry's two thousand and twenty-three strategic plan, and I've extracted quotes from that plan. The, the first goal, the very first goal of that strategic plan is to keep Berry affordable for our residents by developing a strong and diversified financial base that grows the grand list. The strategy number two to support that goal is to facilitate sustainable economic development. Continuing from the strategic plan, then, it goes on to say that the tactics to stimulate that downtown development are to create strategies around unutilized Main Street properties, enact policies and practices that encourage Main Street activity, continue to identify potential downtown development opportunities, and assess unutilized sites downtown and prioritize for creating development opportunities. This initiative exactly addresses those goals from the city plan, from the strategic plan. This, this language here, I think, was every way to describe the Newbury's Building without using the word Newbury's. It's, it's speaking specifically to the Newbury's project, in my opinion. I think it's important to, for the public to understand and the council to understand, we're not requiring, we're not asking for a tax stabilization request, there's no tax exemption being requested, there will be no loss of taxes on this property as long as BADC owns it, and BADC will pay the property taxes on the site as long as we own it. It could very well be in the best interests of the community for the city to acquire this property for a dollar, but one way or another, we'll get it developed and we're not, BADC is not asking for any special dispensa, dispensation if we acquire this property. Another, I think, talking point is that this redevelopment would, is infill property development with potential housing opportunities. I mean, these are the things that the council has been speaking to for months, if not years. So I mean, this, this proposal checks another box from the city's perspective. It's critically important to remind everybody, there's absolutely no risk to the city of Berry or to BADC. If we are not successful in raising these funds, no funds are going to be transferred. I would expect that with the council's endorsement and acceptance, we would initiate the public fundraising campaign. We wouldn't ask the city to transfer funds until probably forty-five to sixty days before we execute. We wouldn't ask the city to transfer funds until probably 45 to 60 days before we execute the purchase and sale, so that we know that we have that, not only the city's funding in place, but we have all the rest of the funding. If we don't have the rest of the funding, we're not going to go to closing. So in summary, I'd like to just review some points. This proposal addresses the number-one chronic down-street complaint. It's consistent with the city's strategic plan. It's an infill project with housing potential, no loss of taxes to the city, no risk to the city, potential tenfold increase in property taxes, and quite frankly, I think that's a low estimate. The BADC directors are committed to this initiative and have pledged $75,000. There's no director conflicts or personal business benefit if this initiative goes through. The directors are not profiting or benefiting personally or individually or business-wise in any way. And I would say to the council, let the public decide. Let the public vote with their dollars. Let the public decide whether this is an initiative that they want to support and whether the council should support it as well. You'll know because we'll get to the end of the fundraising campaign, and we're either going to have the money or not. And with that, I turn it over to the council for questions, and we thank you for your support.
Okay, thank you. Before we continue, council, would you agree that that encompasses all of the information that the council received during the executive session? Because it's important to me that members of the public have the benefit of that information as well. The only thing I would add is that while we were in executive session, I told you two things, gentlemen. I said you came to the city council asking for $400,000. If you get to the end of your campaign and you've raised 950, and you ask the city for another 50,000, my answer would be no.
Well, I can assure you, we have no intention of doing that.
I'm not saying you do, but these are points that were made in the executive session. I just want to make sure that people have the benefit of them. And then the second thing was, it was called a sponsorship agreement, for lack of a better term, but it's really just a memorandum of understanding. I asked you if you would object to the city having a memorandum of understanding with BADC, so that at any time, whether it be through a right of first refusal or a straight-up option, if we deemed that it was in the best interest of the city because of future funding for the city to take possession of that property and own that property, you would have no objection.
No, and I think that frankly memorializes what I was talking about earlier, a public-private partnership.
Right.
We have no objection whatsoever. And frankly, I think the terms would probably be, I don't want to use the word dictated, but I mean, the terms would be set by the council. I can't imagine you would set any terms that BADC would object to.
Well, the terms would be simply that.
Yeah.
I mean, we try to maximize, you know, any future funding opportunities because in speaking with folks at ACCD and A&amp;R, I mean, there are funds that are available to private entities, there are funds that are available to municipalities, and obviously, we'd be looking to maximize those dollars. So I'm not sure what the future brings, but again, I just wanted to pass that point of information along because we did discuss that.
But we'll never get there if we can't get out of the starting gate. If we can't acquire the property, those things become...
Exactly.
And when I say "we," again, I'm talking about this in terms of a public-private partnership.
Okay, council, I'm going to start with the council, and then we'll... Yes?
How is the financial status of BADC at this point in time? Do you have like an accounting of how funds are going out and how funds are coming in? I know you're funded by the city. Yes, I'm wondering what your funding status of BADC is right now, is like they're in a current sheet that says, here's how much money you have, here's how much is going out. In other words, if you're going to pay the taxes...
BADC is, we're not putting, $75,000 is from the...
I understand that. But if you say you're paying the taxes, that you would pay the taxes?
We have plenty of money to pay, yeah. We're good with paying, yeah.
Well, let me be clear. Part of the $100,000 here, as part of the $1.1 million, is allowance for taxes in the short term, closing costs, holding costs, and so on. So we're successful in the fundraising, we'll have the money to pay taxes.
Yes.
I'm going to make a motion to approve that, so that way we didn't run into any issues.
Gotcha. So your motion is to ratify the council's 121724 decision to pledge $400,000 for the acquisition of 143 North Main Street by Berry Area Development, subject to, why don't we, well, we're going to call it the same, a sponsorship agreement?
That's exactly my motion.
Which would be more like a memorandum of understanding. So motion has been made, is there a second?
Could I ask that, for consistency's sake, could I ask Council Dearing for you to resend that motion, and I'll make the original motion, to be consistent with the actions of the last council meeting?
Sure.
Okay.
And I will make the motion as previously stated.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Thank you very much. It's seconded by Council Augustine, which she also seconded the original motion. Okay. Sorry, if you'd like to...
Well, and that, sorry, just to speak to the point of order, that way, if we receive a later opinion that my participation here was not, you know, legal beagle, then that motion would be void, and a future council would have to ratify that decision again.
Understood.
And that's why I'm choosing to do it this way, rather than...
Any other questions from council? Yes?
I worry more that you'll meet your goal halfway and come back to city council and for it to go forward, city council would have to put in more funds.
Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
Do you perceive that as a possibility?
Absolutely not. If we can't raise the money, there are two, maybe three options. If we can't raise the money, depending on what we raise, we'll go to the owner and say, listen, we fried, we worked hard, we've got $400,000 of council support, but we've come up short. Do you want to move forward with a reduced purchase price or not? And if they say yes, great. If they say no, we terminate the agreement and we don't exercise the purchase and sale. We have, I can assure you, we have no intention of double-dipping or coming back again and again and again. This is either going to work on the basis of the proposal that's been put forth, or it won't. And if the public doesn't support it with fundraising, I'm okay with that. I mean, the city will just have to live with a deteriorated downtown for God and so on.
Yes, Council Wazizak.
So I just want to talk through my decision-making process on this one a bit because I received some emails from constituents, but there are a lot more folks here tonight than we received emails from. So I think it's fair to explain to the public why I'm landing where I'm landing on this. The first is that, you know, $600,000 is a lot of money, and I am skeptical that that fundraising capacity is out there somewhere, but I remain, you know, cautiously optimistic, let's give it a try, because as was stated, there is no risk to any city dollars, tax or federal pass-through or Cozy Trust, period, if the rest of that money is not raised. I agree with the premise that this building is a problem property. It is a drag on the downtown. It's something I definitely have heard out, you know, that building's in Ward 2. I hear a lot about that building from my constituents, especially those who live in the downtown core. In my opinion, too, besides the economic drag and the fact that it doesn't look very good, it's also a public health and a public safety risk. That building has never been properly cleaned out from either the 23 or the 20 floor flooding events. The floors are giving out in there. In the past, we have had neighbors experiencing homelessness go into that building seeking emergency shelter, which, you know, we can talk about that more deeply. I have no qualms with someone trying to find shelter where they can get it, but that's not a safe place for anybody to be. The floor could give out at any time. The bottom of that building, the basement, I can only imagine is a mess of toxic sludge. There is also important to me is what you basically called as a right of first refusal for the City of Berry. So that way, this Berry City Council has direct influence on what happens with the future of that building if the rest of the money is in fact raised to get there. And that's important for the long term so that we can dictate, you know, I'd strongly recommend a future council, if this is successful, prioritize housing, prioritize all levels of housing, prioritize housing for our neighbors who are experiencing homelessness. And the city, the municipalities are also prioritized, if you will, in terms of getting brownfield grants. And, you know, I'm not an engineer, but I'm pretty sure that thing's probably a brownfield. And something else that's very important to me in my decision-making process is the alternatives that we've already gone through. We've tried to get that building at a price the city can afford. We've been talking, we've had at least one major conversation about that building, albeit regularly in executive session because it would be real estate transactions, since 2019. And we have talked about, you know what, screw it, this is my last meeting, one way or the other, I'll waive some executive privilege. We've talked about higher fines, we've talked about stronger code enforcement, we've talked about eminent domaining the building on the grounds that it is a public health risk. Every effort, all of those efforts up until now have been unsuccessful. And this effort may very well, six months from now, be unsuccessful, but we won't know that if we don't give it a try. And I am willing to, I've long said that I would pay $1.3 million to knock down that building. I think it is that important to the economic development, to the safety and to the health of Berry City. We have an opportunity, and to be clear, I've never been able to get four votes for that, because I don't like giving city resources to people who already are sitting on relatively large, what my grandmother would consider growing up to be a fortune. I don't like giving them a dime of city money. But that building is emblematic of every failure of governmental systems to be able to address downtown blight, to be able to address public safety issues. Our hands are tied when it comes to any of the other alternatives that we have explored over at least the past five years since I've been on the city council. So I'm skeptical, I don't love it, but I'm willing to give it a try, especially considering the two options are, the city gets our money back completely, or we finally deal with the Jacob's block. Those are the only two outcomes here, and I am willing to say, we'll be in if everyone else buys into it, too. And I don't ask everyone to agree with all of these points, but I felt that it was important to explain how I arrived where I did.
He didn't ask a question, Mr. McKenzie. Council Spalding?
Yeah, he made a statement, though, that I wanted to correct.
I'll give you the opportunity.
I have a couple of comments and questions. I'm concerned about the proposal, I mean, let's be honest, I would love to see the Newbury's building be gone. I would love to see it, but I have a hard time saying that the city is going to dedicate $400,000 for a wish. And I realize that's my opinion, and you guys have a different opinion, and that's okay. I'm concerned that we already have a lot of potential properties that we could use for infill development. There, you spoke about City Place, and as far as I know, it's not full right now, so we could use that for infill development. You talk about how this is sort of like the gateway to new businesses in downtown, and at the same time, when we get reports from the executive director of BADC, last year she came in and told us about all of these great new businesses that were coming to downtown. So it's a little bit disingenuous to say that there's one thing happening and then the other thing is not happening. I also think that we absolutely must have a city option to, if this goes through, and I don't support it, but if it goes through, the city must have an option of what happens to this property, because to dedicate $400,000 of the city's money and not have an option to say it must be housing, we don't need a hotel. We absolutely do not need a hotel. We need housing. And then I also think about how we could grow the grand list by giving $400,000 to people who are flooded out of their homes, who need more help with elevation, who want to stay here but can't stay here, and we're going to dedicate $400,000 to people who have more than enough money. And I feel sick about that. And my last question, which I asked in executive session, I'm going to ask again now in open session, is what is the incentive for people to donate to this? What is the incentive? When you go out and you try to sell this to people, what is the incentive?
He is perfectly clear and perfectly simple, is to address the things that most everybody in the city is, the thing that most everybody in the city is complaining about. The eyesore that's downtown that is a drag on the future of the city and the vitality of the downtown. To me, it's a no-brainer. I just, I, to be honest with you, councillor, I don't think there's a lot of substance in the comments you just made. I think they're just off the mark. You and I obviously disagree, quite clearly disagree. And the one thing I wanted to just correct, if that's the right word for Council Wazizak, is that the city is not going to give $1 to BADC until we know we're going to execute this. It's not a, give us $400,000, and if we're not successful, we'll give it back. You'll never give it to us unless it's going to be successful. So there's no, there's no loss of money. I mean, again, I just, I can't say no risk loud enough, and I'll turn to the mirror.
Council Augustine?
Thank you. Like Council Wazizak, I wanted to just briefly explain sort of my reasoning and my thinking on my vote, especially since I was one who seconded the motion, and I apologize to the people who have emailed me that I haven't been able to respond yet, I'm recovering from surgery at home. So I would heartily second pretty much most of what Council Wazizak stated. In addition, the things that were really important for me to think about are the question of a possibility of infill development. I've been on the Housing Task Force for several years now, and looking for spaces that are true downtown that can provide higher-density housing, housing that could be built to higher flood-safety standards. This represents that opportunity for people to live in a walking distance downtown in newer quality housing, and for that reason, it was incredibly important to me that the city have the option that has already been discussed tonight, to make sure that the property is developed with sort of the council reflecting public interest and public input. Another thing is that the question of the low exposure for risk was important for me, that this is not $400,000 that vanishes no matter what, that this is money that is committed only if this project in six months is a success. If it is not a success, we will turn that $400,000 that is coming out of one of those two funds into something else. And this is not to say for a single second that there are not huge, huge, huge needs that we do need to continue to address as a council. I wholeheartedly agree with Councilor Spalding's pain about seemingly rewarding bad actors when we have a lot of other pain points in the city around money. I absolutely get that. We do have what will be the remaining funding in the Cozy Trust and the remaining funding in the Special Projects Fund, and it would be my personal commitment to look for funding opportunities that really go towards those things once this is committed. And I finally want to say, I think this is absolutely the kind of like conversation where we can have good faith perspectives on both sides. This was a really tough decision for me. I put a lot, a lot, a lot of time and thought and talking to people into it. I spent a little bit of time talking to some friends who are downtown business owners after the newspaper article came out, and asked them to give me their up and down. And so I think it's a tough decision, but I'm comfortable in my vote in the previous session and comfortable in my plans tonight to vote for it.
She didn't ask a question, Mr. McKenzie.
Well, no, but...
She didn't ask a question, Mr. McKenzie.
Could I just explain something?
No. You'll get an opportunity. I'm just going through the council's...
I understand, I understand.
Council Sean Bill?
I, too, want to see that building gone. I think it's not only an eyesore, everything Council Wazizak said is dead-on in terms of safety, the public health. Has that even been touched? And those are the really compelling things, also the possibility of what that piece of property could provide. Where I'm really compromised is that we've had two floods, actually, two and a half, three, if you count last December. The city is financially really hurting. I mean, and there are so many compelling things that are demanding our attention. And every day, a water main breaks, every time some catastrophe happens, there's more and more money that has to be put out. That money, pass-through or whatever, it was ARPA money, we have worked hard to try and be really selective about how we are going to use that. going to use that money. We've unfortunately had to use it for things that we clearly did not anticipate. So I'm, I agree, it's a tough decision, but I'm hearing from a lot of people, the screaming needs that are clearly in front of the city. And so I'm having a really hard time at this point, despite my desire to see it gone. I'm having a really hard time supporting it.
Councillor Earring?
So we'll get my personal feelings out of the way real quick. Personally, when I joined council in 2022, I wanted to see that building gone. It was one of the first things that, that was talked about in, with White and Burke, was how can we get rid of the building? How can we take ownership of that building, so we can do something good with it, something that looks berry and not bear, because it's disgusting and it just does not reflect our community. That's my personal opinion. Professionally, you know, we're trying to grow the grand list. To me, it's one of our city initiatives, it's, you know, part of our plan. And when you're talking about potentially growing $100,000 in that, you're going to return the investment every four years. So to me, when you have one-time funds that you're using for $100,000, then you're going to return that investment at $100,000, you know, give or take every year, for four years, you get your money back, and then we continue to build, and then we're able to kind of invest in our community. We're putting our money where our mouth is. So then that also leads to housing opportunities. We talked about whether it be an infill development. I know many that I've talked to also talk about a secondary hotel, like a Capital Plaza, where people could have events, people could come into the city of Berry and then utilize it in that capacity as well. I know hotels really not on the top of many people's priority lists, not really mine either, but there are things that can be done with that property. But if we don't take that no-risk opportunity, then we're not going to see any kind of benefit. That if we don't take the opportunities that are currently in front of us, with money that was gifted to us, that we can then turn into an investment, to me, this is, is about a business decision to make an investment in the city of Berry and Ward, and really the entire community. I will vote yes for this.
Yes, councillor.
I would be voting no, because the $400,000, although it's not a ton of money, it is a ton of money for the city of Berry. And what I hear from people, what I see is our main needs are infrastructure improvements, systematic plan for improving our infrastructure. Housing, and there are many ways to do housing that I think $400,000 could go pretty far for infill, for giving people grants for ADUs. That money could go a lot farther than on this proposal. First of all, yes, it gives a lot of money to people who don't really need it. But then the city will assume responsibility, it sounds like, or BADC will assume responsibility for passing it on for a dollar. And I don't feel we have any statement that says, here's what it's going to cost, here's why this building is going to be attractive to somebody, here's what it's cost to take it down to the girders, here's what it's going to cost to get rid of the pollution in the basement. There's nothing. So we don't, and what I hear from, from developers is that it's not a good market for developing housing. So I would really like to know, like, what's the math? What's the really simple math? How do you know that this is a possibility? And I also, I walked around after we made offers to people to buy out their properties in the North End. The offers were embarrassingly low. It did not begin to make people whole, it didn't even make them even. If they had a new mortgage, they wouldn't have enough to move down the street. So if we could increase the amount of, of money we could offer those people, and then redevelop and give them better homes, I would feel great about that. If we could offer people grants for doing infill now in existing buildings, I would feel great about that.
Councillor Wazizak?
I would say two things to respond to that. The first one is, you know, I voted yes to create the housing trust fund, I voted yes to award, I made the motion, to award the money to Downstreet for the Ward Five School. There's still, even if this were, let's just say, for the sake of argument, this is special project funds, there's still a half a million dollars there that could be invested into other housing projects, and I'd urge the council to fund those as well. And the second point is just on the buyouts, because I feel the need to make this. I have consistently advocated and asked this council to consider buyouts other than the ones that were approved by the manager. And I have consistently found that there is not enough support to offer buyouts to additional property owners. I've argued for that in executive session, I've argued for that in open session. So if there were a proposal here to buy out more houses, to increase the offers for buyouts, I would absolutely be supporting that. And I've tried to get that done since the flooding in 2023. And I have never been able to get four votes, three other votes, including myself, on the city council for additional buyouts. And I just want to make that extremely clear, because I have tried consistently.
Thank you. And councillor Stockwell, I just respond to one thing you said, because you kind of motioned towards me when you said developers. It's actually a great market to develop housing in right now, in terms of the demand. In terms of matching the cost with our ability to develop it, it's a real challenge right now. I mean, essentially, if you believe in your community, and I do, we're developing definitely six, hopefully eight units of housing and a commercial space in the former town hall. We're doing that right now. We've been doing it. It's a very challenging project, and obviously, you know, for developers, what it means, I mean, the costs, for me, it's horrifying. I look at the price of housing, and I think about young families just starting out, young couples getting married and, and, and starting their homes, and, and looking at them paying, you know, you're getting old when you see a listing come up for $429,000, and you look at it and you say, it wasn't that long ago. And it wasn't that long ago, maybe 10 years, that that very same home sold for $179,000. So I, I mean, I think the market is great. It's a challenging market, and what it means for developers is that you tend to develop closer to home, because the 6% or 8% returns that, you know, that you saw during the 10 years ago, it's just not that kind of return anymore. It's a much lower return. And to some of the other comments, I, I don't disagree with anything that anyone says. I mean, I think we all agree on things, I think we just set our priorities differently. We absolutely have a lot of needs in Berry City. And it's very hard to govern sometimes, because obviously we gave $250,000 to Downstreet, to one organization, to develop nine units of housing in the Ward Five School. I don't regret that. They're, they're going to be beautiful homes. Nine, nine singles or families are going to be very happy there. We gave another $250,000 to establish a loan fund. And I think, councillor, I think you had advocated for a grant component, and I'm not necessarily opposed to that either. But we all recognize, when we did that, if you look at just a 20, you look at a $50,000 home renovation project, which isn't a lot of money if you're renovating a home, that benefits only five people. You know, the trick when you sit here, here, all of us, is we have to do it all. You know, we are going to be asking our citizens for flood mitigation money in this year's budget. I, I'm going to be advocating for at least a quarter of a million dollars. That's going to be something that wasn't there before. But while we do all of these other things, and while we try to help folks who really need help and try to lift them up a little bit, we can't neglect our downtown either. Because we have seen, you know, when, when folks like Liv and Donnie come and they, they, you know, put their roots down in Kat and her husband, you know, that's the world I live in every day. I know, you know, that's borrowed money. That's not money, that's not grant money. That's borrowed money. Succeed or fail, they have to pay that money back. And all I want to do is, I want to make sure we take care of all of these things. And included in all of these things, as far as I'm concerned, is a healthy downtown as well. So what I'd like to do, if council, if you all are done, councillor Gasson, are you good for now? I can't.
I am, thank you.
Because I can't, okay, you're good for now? Okay, so what I'm, what I'm going to do is, there's been a lot of folks online, I realize I haven't called on audience members yet, but there's been a lot of folks online who have had their hands up for a little while. So I'm going to give folks who are online, I think Lisa, I'm going to start, start with you, because you've had your hand up for quite a while. And then we'll just move down the list and, and call on you. And the only thing I'd ask is, if you could, you know, obviously make your points, keep your comments brief, I'm sorry.
Could you at least alternate between people online and the people in the audience who take comments to the public?
Oh, Ed, for you, I'll do it, but it's so hard for me, because I can't see.
I'm not going to sit in there. I just think it'd be great if you could alternate between online and.
Yeah. Oh, I'm, I'm, I'm happy to do that. Okay, so we'll do one online and then one in-room. I'm, I'm happy to do that. But if I, if I, if I don't see you right away, don't get impatient with me.
Sorry, last point of order is, we'll need a seat here for the audience to come up and speak. The folks on the.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'll take.
Actually, actually, we'll meet all of them, folks, because I, I think you guys are good for now, right? Unless you're asked a specific question, and then you can just run up to the table. Okay, so like I said, so the only thing I would ask folks is, is, I mean, obviously, I'm going to give you the opportunity to speak, but, but, well, in fairness, you've heard some redundant comments from the council. So you know what? Just go ahead, we'll see how it goes. Lisa, why don't I start with you?
All right, thanks, thanks, Mayor. I'll try to keep this brief, because I know there are members of the public who also wish to speak. I understand that the grand list value of this property is around $325,000. The option price is a million, and $400,000 is pledged by the city, if you ratify this tonight. My, my, one of my concerns is that $400,000 is just the beginning of what Berry City will pay. Is there any estimate of how much this project will cost taxpayers in the end? Councillor Wazizak just outlined some of the problems with this property. We've got environmental concerns, possible toxic materials, will it need to be demolished? And I wonder at what cost and to whom. This seems like a money pit that will place more and more financial burden on taxpayers as time moves on. And I want to also address Steve McKenzie's comment. Special project funds are taxpayer funds. They can and should be used to invest in ways that benefit taxpayers, even if those funds did not come from property taxes. Taxpayers deserve that consideration. And I don't believe this project does that. And the narrative that we've long heard, and that I believe to be true, is that Berry City is in dire financial straits. There never seems to be enough money to pay for the things we need or invest in ways that will reduce future expenses while our infrastructure crumbles. For the past few years, financial decisions like this have largely been in open session, and the public was kept informed all along, with many opportunities along the way to engage. Some examples are the Ward Five School, Seminary Street, the revolving loan fund, and the parcel in East Montpelier. And all of these were scrutinized in open session, where we considered the cost benefit, return on investment, project sustainability, if there were any future expenses, our grand list impact, and, and more. And that process has been mostly transparent and public before council committed funds. This is not like those decisions. The public part of that process has been non-existent until tonight. And right here, council is poised to ratify a decision with no public participation until this moment, right here, within less than an hour of seeing a presentation or hearing council's discussion. And to address Steve McKenzie's other comment, the strategic plan was developed before the flood of July 2023. Much has changed in our city since then. BADC says that they will pay the property taxes, but note that BADC is funded by tax dollars. So taxes paid back to the city come from taxpayer dollars. It's a circular reference. I would like council and BADC to explain to Berry how this is the best use of $400,000 right now at this point in time. And explain it like you would to a working-class Berry City homeowner, one who has invested their property and this community, and specifically one who has been denied a buyout when their property became distressed, because there was no money and it just didn't make financial sense. Because if we've got $400,000 to buy out distressed properties, I believe that's who should be prioritized. Working-class residents and taxpayers, not a bad actor who has held their property hostage for decades, hoping for, and now in line to receive a financial windfall. If you vote yes, you encourage other property owners to do the same thing as this one. Hold out until you hit the jackpot. Your actions have consequences, and I urge you to vote no, and do not ratify this decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there someone in the audience? Mr. Sannick?
Mr. Mayor, councillors, I thank you very much sincerely for your opportunity to express an opinion on his decision this evening.
Speak into the mic, please. Oh, yeah, sorry. Thanks.
Thanks for this chance to speak. I want to begin by saying that I agree, it is a good idea and a very good benefit to the community that the buildings be demolished, for all the reasons which have been discussed and advanced by BADC. We're in total agreement with that. I also agree with the concept that there should be, at least be a temporary green space downtown, pending, you know, what the resolution would be for the final development on the site. The thing I struggle with and in trouble by is the use of the $400,000 in ARPA money. I filed ARPA as I was going through Congress, and boy, it sure seems to me that that was intended to be used for infrastructure primarily. I also reviewed this afternoon the toolbox which Vermont law provides to municipalities in these types of situations. For example, here in Berry City, we have the Chapter 23 in the city ordinances, which deals with vacant and abandoned buildings. In the chapter itself, it begins by reciting the enabling legislation found in Title 24, Chapter 61, entitled 24 and Chapter 83 and Chapter 24 of Vermont law. It's great that the city of Berry has promulgated Chapter 23, but quite frankly, it's pretty anemic compared to other municipalities in terms of what they do. It's very anemic when you compare it to municipalities across the country that have dealt with this situation. I'm not going to compare Berry by any imagination to South Bronx in New York City, but that whole area was turned around. I'm not comparing us to South Bronx by any, any stretch. But I would, I do want to point out that in that toolbox provided to Vermont municipalities, the city might want to consider going back and amending Chapter 23 of the city ordinance. I was very interested in Teddy reciting the litany of apparently what's wrong with these two properties. I was unable to get down here to review, and I don't even know if it's a public file, to review the, the file under Chapter 23 for this particular property, to see what steps have been taken by the code enforcement team under Chapter 23. Have, for example, there have been administrative penalties implemented against these property owners? I don't know. Have there been any concrete steps taken? And is there a record requiring them to deal with these deficiencies and these safety and these health problems with the building? St. Albans ordinance was mentioned by Steve, I read that ordinance this afternoon by coincidence. In that ordinance, they actually do have a provision which is enabled by 24 VSA Section 3116, which allows a municipality to compel the property owner to demolish a building in these dire situations. And if the property owner doesn't do it, the municipality is allowed, under state law, to step in and demolish the building and place a lien immediately on the property to recoup the, the financial resources that the city used in tearing the building down. So I guess, in closing here, what I say, I would encourage the city council to take a step back and consider amending Chapter 23, to put more tools into our local toolbox to deal with this situation. I tell you, I'm really worried that we're going to do, and I want to say this carefully, because I don't want to get sued, but you know, it seems to me that we have properties in a city which are the poster children for bad actors. And what we're doing here by shoveling public money out the door is we're empowering them. They're going to become the model by which others could make use of in the future. So I encourage you to step back. I live in the North End, they were trying to line that sewer and it collapsed. Council members have pointed out that serious problems with infrastructure, 400 grand can go a long way to the Nelson vaults in this city, and we need it. So again, I urge you not to appropriate the money. I urge you to amend Chapter 23 posthaste and take steps against this property owner and demolish the buildings. Bring them down, turn into green space, and then we can look for developers to fill the space. Thanks for listening.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Of course.
Mr. Sannick, what tools have you seen in other communities that you've looked at their toolboxes to help kind of give some teeth to Chapter 23?
Well, the strongest tool I saw was the provision which is in 24 VSA Section 3 1. Well, the strongest tool I saw was the provision which is in 24 VSA Section 3116, which empowers the municipality to compel the property owner to demolish the unsafe, unhealthy, et cetera, dangerous building. That provision is in the St. Albans municipal ordinance. I didn't look at other ordinances. I have to bet there's a similar provision, perhaps in Burlington's ordinance. But to answer your question, the best I can say right now is the St. Albans municipal ordinance has language which the city might want to model.
I was just curious if there were any less, I don't know, drastic things that we could look at, not necessarily for this building, but you know, we're talking about blighted buildings and poster children. So what can we potentially do for those that aren't the poster children that we need to demolish or take, take over, shall we say? You know, I'm looking for solutions that what we could do is in some of these buildings that are, an eyesore, we'll say for lack of better.
You know, council, I'd be glad. I'm one of these retired guys and there's nothing good on TV anymore, anymore. So I'd be glad to work with the council and a, a task force to answer those questions. But in the short term, my most specific recommendation would be to mirror the language in 24 VSA 3116, add that to Chapter 3 of our ordinance, allow the council with reasonable due process to contact these property owners, either shape up the building or issue the order that they have to demolish the building by a certain date, or the city will do it, and place the lien on their property.
Thanks, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see, moving online.
Ginger Cloud.
Ginger Cloud?
Thank you so much. And, you know, it's so honored to be a part of this community. And the last two speakers were just phenomenal. So thank you for your voices and for all the public service that our community members engage in and also our council and, and our mayor. I really appreciate the efforts by the council to look into how to make our city a better and more beautiful place. I wonder about this large investment in a single property and the potential cost or miss opportunity to instead invest in the people living in our city. My question for the council and the mayor are my, or my questions are what measurable benefits will our most vulnerable and impoverished residents see from this investment? And also what specific community needs are being prioritized with this decision? And I also urge you not to give this money for this investment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to. Sigby, how are you?
I'm great. How are you?
Fine, thank you.
Everyone.
You as well.
Sarah.
Sorry.
I'm one of these persons who throws herself into a sofa. So I guess I don't have that ladylike approach. Thank you for inviting me forward. I've got probably a very specific experience here in Berry that no one else has. I keep hearing people say, oh, you've been in conversations with people downtown. You've been hearing things. Well, nobody bothered to talk to me, so I'm, I'm very pleased to be sitting here to share a couple observations. First of all, I have a lot of experience with a spot blight real estate transaction. Studio Place Arts is where I work, and I know all of the details behind that transaction. The city of Berry did not offer $400,000, $100,000, $10,000, not even $1,000. We did it with sweat equity. And one of the things that's very exciting about starting a project that really has a community-specific goal is that you can fundraise effectively. It was all out in the open. We brought the proposal to City Hall. There were two other proposals for that site. The Nichols block had stood vacant and dilapidated after a major fire for about five years. There was a proposal. Mr. Lozam, you know very well, one of the proposals was yours, and I think Al Flores. There was another proposal by our next door neighbor for parking. And so essentially, the public was involved in making a decision that a community center for the arts would be a great asset for downtown Berry. And I'm pleased to say, I think it really is. I think that we've proven ourselves. I think we've, we've done a lot of work on the real estate. But now I'm going to hit pause and I'm going to say the real comment that you didn't hear from other people who you might be talking to is that, yeah, who doesn't want to get rid of a vacant building that looks horrible? But I also don't really see it because I see a lot of the other great things that are happening in downtown Berry. I don't think it would hurt us at all to hit pause and wait for a few years. I don't think that this is the world's best deal on the property. So hitting pause would be fine. What I look at right now is opportunity cost. This funding from both sources could be used to leverage flood repairs and infrastructure improvements that would change the life of downtown businesses as well as downtown residents. And I can tell you, my property flooded three times in 12 months. I had to walk through, in some cases, waist-high water because our infrastructure is so poorly designed that the, the water can't even drain out appropriately. I had to wade clinging to the side of a building for the third flood so that I could get to my building and shut down the fuses so that I wouldn't lose my elevator and I wouldn't lose other aspects of my building. So while you may be hearing that people are tired of seeing an eyesore, I can tell you, put the money where it's really going to add up and give us something back. We need to use that money to leverage flood recovery and resilience work. We need improved infrastructure. And I can tell you, it's not fair to all of us. I have to use my flood insurance. It's basically a form of, you know, it's pretty relaxed behavior if I have to keep, you know, seeing an increase in my flood insurance rates because the infrastructure in my city is not up to snuff. So I'm asking you to do the right thing. Do the right thing by hitting pause. This project is a good one, but it should be delayed. The delay is going to help the project build some momentum for the fundraising. That's how you do a fundraising campaign. You don't just sort of launch a campaign out of the blue after a, a closed-door meeting. This, this will really help build the public sentiment, and at the same time, we're going to be able to do our homework and get the downtown infrastructure in much improved shape. So my question is, after that, would it really matter if we hit pause and waited for three to five years since we've been waiting for quite some time already to see something done? I, I think not. And so I'm asking you to vote no and to use the money to leverage flood recovery and remediation work so that downtown businesses and residents can actually thrive. Because it's not going to get any drier. It will get a lot wetter. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Amy Galford.
Amy Galford.
Hi. I had a couple that I'll share. In thinking about a real estate transaction, I just, I'm thinking about it from like the home buying perspective. And I would usually think about, like, what would the equivalent be here of an appraisal and an inspection? Because you'd normally want an offer on a home to be contingent on, on appraisal and inspection, or, or the bank might be interested if you're, you're getting a mortgage for it. So the number was cited for the value that's on the current brand list. I'm curious what the breakdown of that is between the lot and the, the improvements on the lot, the actual building. Because this is an unusual case where you're talking about potentially having to raise the building for the condition that it's in. So I'm curious about the split between the value of the lot, which would be relatively high, I think, being on, on Main Street compared to some other places, but if the building is not of value. So I'm just curious about that for, for information. I can see sort of the health and environmental hazards going both ways. You'd want to make sure the city isn't getting into some kind of liability issue with that. On the other hand, we already are, as long as the fire department might have to respond to that and some of the other issues. So I'm certainly concerned about that, but it's, I, I think it could go either way on, on what the right thing is to do about that. I am curious because of some of the stories that came out during the flooding about impacts from one property down on Main Street on the neighboring properties. So for instance, you would get, it might have been, I, I can't remember which specific property, so I won't try to name that. But I remember one news story where there was like a fuel oil spill in one basement that cross-connected into another basement. So like it, it affected the adjacent properties in particular when something wasn't being taken care of after the flood. So I'm curious for that particular site, what are the impacts of the current state of that on the adjacent properties, both in terms of what's below ground, in terms of things like if there's fuel oil or, or other dangerous components down there. And then also above ground, all the buildings there seem so tightly connected to me. I don't know how they impact each other in terms of structural integrity. And so I'd be, I'd be curious to hear from the adjoining property owners and, and how they, they see this. More broadly, I've spoken to council on other opportunities for where the ARPA money has been talked about. It's always bothered me that the ARPA money has been talked about as though it's a separate pot of money. You know, it was federal money to stimulate the economy and create jobs and, and get things done. And it kind of bothers me that so much of our, our city's money, nothing's been done with it yet. It's really not separate money. It's, it's income replacement for the city. I have spoken at several other times when things have been approved for that ARPA money, that I wasn't a fan of public money going to private organizations. That includes the Ward Five School. I spoke at that city council meeting saying, I think we should improve the infrastructure around that location. Councilor Stockwell disagreed with me and said that she had heard anecdotally from someone who said actually things were fine for walking up to the Ward Five School. I would still say there's no sidewalk on Blackwell Street on that, on that portion. And I remember Counselor Wassazak said, well, we should do both. We should do both the local infrastructure and chip in money for rewarding the housing. So not that I'm opposed to affordable housing, but conceptually, I'm not crazy about public money going to private development, even if it's a nonprofit like Evernorth. But we've already set that precedent that, that we spent money on that. Same thing with the revolving loan fund for housing. In my day job, I work in one of the state revolving loan programs, and it's a different, different beast, but those are complicated. And in this case, it's private, it's public money going to private homeowners. And I, I'm kind of philosophically opposed to that, but city council already approved that. We've been selling off city-owned lots throughout the city for small dollar amounts with the greater objective of, of providing more housing and a higher use than, than parking lots. So I have this part of me that's opposed to putting public money into private development, but we've already been doing that. So I'm struggling a little bit to figure out where the line is between that and how this project is different. It's a little hard to do that because I don't have a number in mind of like, what does this $400,000 leverage in terms of what it would develop into? But I think, you know, to have the argument that it shouldn't go to private development, city council already crossed that bridge on approving that on, on other things. And I've constantly lobbied that the city has such deep infrastructure bills that that's what we should be spending our money on. But, so I'm not sure why infrastructure is coming up specifically with this, with this property. I am curious if the property, if the above-ground structure has to be raised, what the value is of remaining infrastructure? So as an infolocation, you know, is the water and sewer connection there of value, you know, in addition to the square footage of the lot? Are there things that would still be maintained on the building? Or would it be a, a complete start? So those are things I wish I knew in terms of factual information, and maybe the city council's already discussed that, or maybe you have more knowledge of that, of that site. But that's just a few thoughts I had.
Thank you. Anyone from the audience wishing to speak? Move on.
Caitlin Burnham.
To Caitlin Burnham. And then Jeremy, you've been hanging there for a while, so you're next.
Hi, yes. So I just want to be clear with my understanding of the situation. It seems to me that there is zero plan set in stone for this property if everything does happen to go through. And to Deering's point about investing in this commercial property and seeing a quote unquote return in investments within four years, that seems like a broad leap since we don't know what this property will be. And also, if we invest in our infrastructure or use this money for families that could use this for buyouts, then we'd be returning our investment immediately. Our, like, there's so many other issues that need to be taken care of, and this seems to, this, this whole, this whole question, this whole buyout, this whole everything just seems very sudden. And it's just wild that there was so little public conversation about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeremy?
Yeah, I'm just gonna actually want to start off with a question because I want to clarify my understanding of what is even being asked here. It seems to me that the, what is being, going to be voted on here is whether or not to commit $400,000 to this endeavor and then figure out if, if we're going to obligate BADC to do anything with the property if they manage to acquire it later. Is that about right?
Yes.
Okay, so that seems bizarre to me, quite frankly. Like, I, I don't under, I cannot think of any situation in which you would agree to spend $400,000 on something and then figure out the details later. I don't understand why we wouldn't figure out those details first, why we wouldn't, say, for example, obligate BADC to then hand over the property to the city for the dollar if they're successful at raising funds, and instead make a commitment to an extremely vague plan, right, that consists of, oh, we could potentially give it to a private developer. We could potentially give it to the city for a dollar. It could potentially turn into this, or this, or this, or this. It seems extraordinarily light on details. And it also seems weird to me to be, for Berry City to be spending $400,000 to then hand, uh, hand over the property to a third party, which doesn't just represent Berry City, but represents Berry Town as well. So I would think if we were to commit to something like this, it would, it would make sense to either ensure that, that property is obligated to be handed over to Berry City, or that Berry Town be required to, to provide some sort of commitment itself. I would, I'd also like to comment that I don't, I, I'm not convinced that there's been enough exploration of what, what legal tools we have to, to pursue other routes to this, right? We're told that there have been secret closed-door meetings of, I would say questionable legality, that have concluded that the city isn't capable of doing things like revisiting our commercial vacancy ordinance to increase fines, or, you know, pursue any of the other avenues that I believe the gentleman was named Ed had brought up. None of this has been explained to the public whatsoever. None of this plan is, seems set in stone or consistent or thoroughly designed. And all of a sudden, we're being asked to throw like an extraordinary amount of money at an already very wealthy person in order to buy this property and hand it over to someone else. It, it does not make any sense at all, and it does not feel at all appropriate to hold this vote right now. And I would highly encourage city council to continue discussions of this proposal. It's not, there are things in this that are, that are not completely unreasonable. Some things that aren't completely unreasonable. But I, I, it seems wildly inappropriate to hold this vote now and not, at least further discussion. So I, I would, I would advise the city to table this vote and, and move forward with the discussion in a much more open, honest fashion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Danielle Sorsky.
Danielle?
Can you hear me okay?
We can.
Great. First, I just want to express gratitude, one for being able to, to speak tonight to this issue, and for all the other speakers as well, because I've learned a lot from them that I didn't learn from council. So that's really helpful, especially because I didn't really have much time to really dedicate to researching this. And I'm the type of person who loves to do my homework before I speak up about something. So I found this really particularly challenging to be able to do that. And so I just want to say that I've just been really frustrated with this process, like how I found out about it, that it was just such a short timeline, especially during the holidays. And especially because this is a big project that does involve the community. As so many folks have said, if this is like such a big, important thing for folks in our community, you know, that they've said this is something they want to see change, why wouldn't we want to make sure that all those voices were heard and that they understood what was going on other than reading what's in the Times Argus? I, I just, I have a real lack of confidence in the presentation. I found that there really wasn't that much good information provided that was very convincing to me, and I would hope that the council would have seen that as well. You know, we are rewarding bad behavior, and I recognize that Berry City is not responsible for the system that we live in, that somehow somebody who is not taking care of their property and creating an unhealthy space can get away with it, and that our job is to then pay them. When we have a city who has a quarter When we have a city who has a quarter of our population living in poverty, we are gonna give $400,000, not even just that, 1.4? I mean, 1 million? I don't know. I mean, to somebody like that, knowing where our city is at, I mean, I just don't think the payback that I heard would happen, at least so far as the presentation presented, it just doesn't seem like that's gonna happen. You know, we heard 1.5 examples, I'll say, in the entire state where other communities have done this, and we didn't even hear what the outcome was of that. So again, I don't feel, I'm not feeling like this is, like I'm inspired by that presentation. I've also heard, you know, it's the most common complaint, and I'd just like to know, like, where is the data behind that? You know, has the community been surveyed and that was the most common complaint of the community? Is that the way we want to spend our $400,000 in ARPA funding? I don't think so. And so I just, again, I'm not convinced. And to say that, well, the benefit will be to our tax base, that's really speculation. I recognize that we can't have that information now, but I don't think it's something that we should be making such a big decision on. And then I would also say that in the presentation, you know, there's absolutely no risk to the city. So maybe specifically, if BADC can't fundraise the money, there's no risk, right, that we wouldn't lose it. But I'm not so sure that's true. I don't know when that funding needs to be used by. I'm guessing fiscal year 2026, I think Teddy had told me in an email. So what happens if that money's not raised and we haven't spent that funding and we haven't come up with another idea for it? Do we lose it? So that's a risk. The cost after acquisition, we heard other folks talking about this, we don't know what it's gonna cost, even if we do purchase the property, that's a risk. So I just think it's really unfair to say to our community that there's no risk. I think it's totally okay for things to have risk and then put those things out there, and then we make a decision based on that. I think that's really important. I think we also know that, you know, Berry City identified priorities, and this was before the flooding. So I wonder, what are those three priorities now? And would this building be one of them? And maybe there would be a priority that that $400,000 could be used for. I think it absolutely, if this moves forward at some point, has to be used for something with public use. I think one thing we've seen is that this community is ready to stand up and fight to get that landlord to deal with this, right? And so I think right now what you have is this like audience of people who are saying, hey, we want to make it happen, like, anything we need to do to make this landlord deal with this responsibility, we are supportive of the council to do that. So I know you heard our voices, you know, we're here for you. And then just to end it, I just, you know, want to say again, I think council could do better in terms of the public input process here. I think it was such a short period of time, very limited information, and I think you can do better than that. And I think, from what I know of all the folks that are serving, I think you want to do better than that. So thank you.
Thank you.
If I could just, sorry, clarify that I did say in my email response to Danielle that the money had to be spent by 2026. I was at my, in my in-laws' living room for the holidays. I misspoke. Creating the special project fund met, that is the equivalent of spending it by 2026. So just for clarity's sake, that was my mistake. The money does not have to be expended by the end of 2026.
Yes, of course. The chair really sinks when you, just be careful.
Might need help getting out.
It's easy to go over backwards.
First, I want to add to Mr. Stanek's answer to you, Mr. Deering, directly. I think that there are many other remedies, and we can ratchet them up. I'm not sure, I didn't, I'm not as schooled in that particular ordinance that we have or in the state as Ed, but I know that once we begin the process of identifying a blighted building, we then can take steps to actually have them comply. Certainly, I'm sure they've been fined already, I hope so. If not, definitely a fine would start, and then if, with a date of when they need to begin dealing with the problem. And then it could ratchet up to another amount in the next communication and kind of gradually bring it up to the point where we would file for taking possession of the building in the way that Mr. Stanek described. I think that we now currently, whereas in the past, my understanding, or at least my awareness of ordinances around properties, hasn't had as much attention as it may be having now, because now we have, I believe, two professionals who are charged on this municipal workers, I think they're firefighters, yeah, to be on this team to investigate buildings like this. Because there is also the potential for environmental problems, I think it's quite likely that we could engage not only the agency of natural resources, but even the EPA in demanding that that get cleaned up. So there are other options that we have even before taking possession of the building and tearing it down. And on another note, I have to say that using that $400,000 of ARPA funds to develop or to improve our infrastructure would help every single person living in the city, as well as all the businesses. That, to me, is equity. This proposal will help two businesspeople who are real estate investors. It may, I don't know how it's gonna help BADC, perhaps just with, you know, the bragging rights of doing something good for the city. I don't know how it's going to affect those investors that do invest in it. And this is a pie in the sky. We don't know if something can be redeveloped. I recall that when City Place, is that's what it's called? Yeah, when City Place was proposed, we were all behind it because there was gonna be a grocery store downtown, and it might even be a food co-op. Did that happen? I don't think so. So again, like the others who spoke this evening, I would really urge you, encourage you, to take the time to investigate this. I will do everything I can, as the chair of the JEDAB Committee, to help. One of the things that I think we could do, because we have created now a working group to do this, is to look into the ordinances, to help them, to improve them, and we'd love to be part of the task force that does that for the ordinance for blighted buildings. Thank you.
Thank you. Jake Hemrick?
Sorry for the delay on the pause, Mr. Mayor. And thank you for your consideration of this item. I would just like to say that projects don't go wrong so much as they start wrong, and this one really seems to be starting off with a heck of a lot, a heck of a lot of tomfoolery. There's no shortage of vacant and derelict buildings downtown, and if this council moves forward, it is not only rewarding one of the worst actors, who seemingly doesn't give a rip about Berry City, it also denies equal opportunity to the other businesses and landowners in downtown who really care about the city. And they could, they could be given an opportunity to access public funds, to grow the grand list with realistic plans grounded in actual comparables with experienced developers at the table and solid math behind their proposals. What BADC is asking for is coming to the taxpayers to ask for more money for their projects. It's not an excessive sum of money for a solid redevelopment plan, but they don't have a solid redevelopment plan or a record, a recent record of delivering on any grand list growth. There were a lot of maybes with no comparables, and I think if you go in for an inch on this plan, you're gonna be in for four miles. It's a project that's gonna take a ton and ton of money to get done, and that comes at a big opportunity cost in a city with a mountain of deferred maintenance from decades of underinvestment and lack of capital planning. We gotta get ahead of the next storm, and the only way we're gonna do that is if we continue to fund infrastructure and, and development that has real, real development plans on the other end. And that's why I commend the council for its work, working with experienced developers like Evernorth, like Downstreet, like DEW Construction, that know how, know how to get a building built and get it done. And like, I think, boy, Studio Play Arts would have been a great example of somebody the city council could have partnered with because Sue got the job done. And, and as we think about the next budget and the increasing costs of living in the city, taxes going up, water and sewer bills going up, people are, people are struggling, and, and you're using one-time funds to buy down the tax rate, your operational, operations, that's, that short-termism is gonna come due. Who's gonna pay those double-digit tax rate increases? Who's gonna pay the double-digit water and sewer rate increases? And, and so we need to be very careful when we're taking risks, and I, I think the council will be right to put this, this project on pause. That big building's been vacant for years, it's likely still gonna be vacant. Let's get a good plan. Get a good plan before you're public, before you commit money, and then, and then move. Because I think that's, that's what we can do. And there are a lot of people who care a hell of a lot about this city, and will put money behind great ideas, businesses that are investing in downtown and opening. We don't have to reward the bad property owner. These projects go wrong when they start wrong, and this one's starting off wrong. Thank you.
Thank you.
Beth Gilgartner.
Oh, thank you, Beth.
Yes, thank you.
Welcome.
I'm a relative newcomer or a returner to Berry, having been away for 35 years. And I, I don't know a ton about city management or city planning, but I actually do.
Could you, could you make a little, little bigger voice, Beth, a little bit?
I can try.
Thank you.
Lean closer. Is that better?
Yep, it is. Thank you.
Okay. I don't know, I'm not a city planner, I don't know a lot about the municipal resources that are at your disposal. But looking at this project, I can't help but see that you're talking about spending a million dollars on something you're going to tear down and being responsible for taking care of whatever toxic waste and other things that you find, and then you still have to find out, you know, you still have to find money or a developer to buy, to build something on top of it. I think I would, I don't know every, all the players, but was it Ed Stefani talking about the code in St. Albans, putting some teeth in there? If you've got multiple vacant properties that pay nominal taxes, can you do something that says, well, if you don't have anything in that building, there's an added tax on top of it, so that it's not $12,000 that you raise from Newbury Building every year? It goes up the longer they don't do anything. So that's my thinking, is that this seems like a big expenditure when there are lots of other things that are needed, like infrastructure. This, you know, if I were prioritizing my project, and for those of you who don't know who I am, we bought 27 Camp and we've been restoring it. If I were prioritizing my project, I wouldn't start with this. I would start with the things, you know, for a house, with roof, the electricity, that, you know, the infrastructure. And I think the city needs to start with the infrastructure, too. Thanks for listening.
Thank you. Michael Booton?
I feel really bad for you folks, this is a difficult situation, right? I want to say that first, I don't think this is out of the blue, especially when you talk to BADC members, that's the first thing that they talk to you about, is buying that building, getting rid of it, putting it in hands of someone that's gonna actually develop that, that property. I remember when it was JJ Newberry's, and it was a beautiful block, and I highly recommend folks that haven't experienced that to go online and take a look. I am interested to know more about what Mr. Stanek has talked about. That's very interesting. I know, Teddy, you broke the executive session, so I'm just gonna keep going. We have talked about levying fines against them and doing that kind of stuff, but the problem is, is that you just can't do that because it's singling them out, and that becomes a lawsuit issue. That's what we were told. You know, and it's, I understand that, that it's a lot of money. It's a lot of money that they may not be able to raise, but it's an opportunity for the council to make a difference in our community. I remember when there was a redevelopment of that whole block, and it was scuttled by councilors, and it was unfortunate. It was, it was a shame to our community for that, and I will never forget that, and I think this is an opportunity to, to move forward and possibly do something really awesome with that. And I hope and ask that you would support this as a city councillor.
Thank you. Ellen, would you mind?
Yeah, I'm trying.
Last name for the record, would you mind?
No one else has said their name, but this is Ellen Kay from East Street in Berry.
Oh, hi, Ellen. I could read them, they all have, so.
I'm on the phone. I am driving, don't know how the reception is, can you hear me all right?
No worries, you're fine. Thank you.
Okay, great. Well, I just, I, there's no need to repeat all of the wonderful points I have heard throughout this meeting. I am, you know, like others, very concerned about public money ending up in private hands. That's been said eloquently, I don't need to go on about that. I want to recall, however, a meeting, the most heartbreaking city council meeting I have ever been to, a few months back, maybe even six months back, where several property owners were trying to get out from under flooded properties, had lived here for a long time, had cared deeply about their homes, and what we had to say to them was, sorry, we can't help. Sorry, you're out of luck. It was devastating. I remember how hard it was to sleep that evening. And now we're talking about $400,000 given to private owners to get out from under a building that has been neglected, that has been empty, because we want a better-looking downtown, which is valid, but not, not in the, in the environment in which we have, you know, what, four, four water main breaks in a week, a few months ago, six days without drinking water? This is unconscionable, and I'm also quite concerned with the way that executive session was used for something that isn't actually the terms of a real estate deal. Thank you.
Thank you. Bern, I think you had your hand up first, and then I'll get to you.
Hi, everyone. You may not know me, I'm a newer face. My name is Katie Holber, and I just want to thank you all for your time and consideration. I know that this is controversial and difficult for everyone involved. I'm not going to state my opinion one way or another about whether you should, you should vote for this or against it, but I do believe that hitting pause is a great option for the city, and I believe that because it would be in the city's best interest to firm up the rights that they would receive as part of the $400,000 commitment before making the commitment. You cannot hit reverse on that decision, and you will lose your bargaining power. No offense intended to the BADC, it's just a phrase. I believe that firming up those rights before committing those funds is in everyone's best interest, and thank you for your time. I really appreciate all of your efforts.
Thank you. Very well spoken. I hope you come around a lot more. It's very nice. Thank you. Bern, are you ready now?
My name is Bern Rose, Bernadette Rose. Thank you for having this. I feel really old. My name is Bern Rose, Bernadette Rose. Thank you for having this opportunity for public discourse and public information tonight. I really appreciate that the BADC came, and I forgot that the time was five o'clock until somebody told me it was time to get going. I think pause is a good point here. I see who's voted yes, who might vote yes, or who might vote no. I see some strong feelings. But I'm going to pay attention to one of the things that Steve said. He said that the public support of this project by raising funds would be the litmus for its success. It doesn't feel like that's what I'm hearing tonight. I'm hearing a lot of, let's at least pause this. And I don't know when that public fundraising is happening, who that public is, because we here in Berry City don't have that kind of money to put into a big project. If we do, I haven't seen it. I haven't seen it going into the recovery resilience. I haven't seen it into a new DPW garage. And by the way, today I saw city workers out checking the fire hydrants and fixing them up, and I appreciate their good work all the time. So how are we going to raise money if already we see the public controversy, the lack of involving the pub, public, the lack of information, the lack of a solid plan? Like Sue said, when you have a goal, it's easier to get people to rally around your goal. I'd like to see BADC step back and, and do that. So I think it's a great project. I just think that we need to have a little time. And I'd like to see things like that Mr. Stanek brought up to look at. Maybe there's a different way to go about this particular project. I also question the capacity for the BADC to handle a project like this. I'm not sure of all the players or how it all worked, but the city just gave BADC $60,000 because they failed to do due diligence and with a grant application. And so we, no, or you tell me how it worked. I just know that the city paid $60,000 to fulfill some obligation. And that was a $60,000. Are we going to see more of those? And who's handling that? And is the bandwidth of the people who are doing this work, do they have the capacity to do this kind of a thing? And maybe if they were to step back and we step back, they would garner my support, because I would support a project like this if I knew that we as a community were working on it together. And so that's why I questioned it. And because I haven't been as well as I have been for a while, I miss some of those who does what and who pays what. But I do know that we paid $60,000 for something because there was a, a, a due date on something that we missed. And you could tell me, please, if that, if you want to explain it, I'm happy to hear you tell me why we spent that $60,000 that we didn't know we were going to spend.
That was more accurate. It wasn't BADC. It was the Prospect Heights Development Project, which has been assigned to the city.
Okay. And while it was the Prospect Heights Development, was that part of the BADC?
Happy to explain that to you.
Okay.
But we're talking about something else right now.
Well, I, I think it all, I think it, I think, I think the projects can overlap, and that's-
No, they actually don't.
Oh, okay.
They're actually two separate real estate.
Really? And, and maybe some of the players overlap. So that might be, that might be where my, my question is coming, is if the players are overlapping and we're missing some of the goals and we're missing some of the deadlines, stepping back and making sure we have one solidly in hand, solidly under control, and then going back. And I'd also like to see that money go into supporting some of our citizens whose homes were flooded and who need a boost to help stay in the game and to continue paying taxes and being part of our community. So thank you.
Thank you.
And I feel that I received an email that I was told I was misinformed, I'd been given bad information, and a few other things from a member of the BADC. And nobody gave me the information, and that was the problem. I read about it in The Times August, and that was where all my information came from. And it wasn't in the council, it wasn't in the minutes, because there weren't any minutes yet. And it wasn't in public discussion, because there wasn't any. So I think that was a mistake, something to learn from.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Connie?
Hello. Are you hearing me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Okay. I'm not against putting this on hold. I am for tearing down Newberry's JJ and Decot Building. I also remember them, and I remember Wayland's and the diner and all that. And they need, those buildings need to go. And if you're thinking about fighting Jeffrey, he'll fight you to the end, and he's got the money to do it, is my opinion. And that's all. Thank you. Goodbye.
Thank you. Thank you, Connie. Council? Anything else?
I-
Yes, of course.
I cannot overstate how much I would prefer to use this money for specifically individually impacted flood victims in Berry City. I have tried to do that, and I have thus far been unsuccessful. I have not been able to convince three other of my colleagues to make that investment, because with all due respect to the city manager, his recommendation is that we do not approve any more slash any with city funding. And a majority of council has been unwilling to override that decision. I would strongly encourage the rest of the city council moving forward to entertain, using the remainder of the special projects fund and the money that will be coming in through the Cozy Trust once the estate is settled, to make those investments in our flood victims and in our infrastructure. Because I can't, I, I simply do not disagree with any of the points that have been raised about the questionable, frankly, moral and ethical decision to use that money for this as opposed to literally bailing out flood victims in Berry City. We could use special project funding to make some landowners whole, to do the same thing we're doing here. Spend some money to acquire a property, to sell it for a dollar, just like we're doing on Seminary Street with Downstreet. In the absence of a proposal to do that, I feel that this is worth a shot. And I would also, you know, Mr. Stanek spoke earlier about potential avenues to deal with this building without spending $400,000 of special projects fund. If that is an option, I would also prefer to do that. That is, I, I don't mean to imply at all that you're wrong, but that is not advice that the city has gotten from our lawyers in the past when we've been discussing that. And, and that, that legal opinion, as this night started with, that's what I have to go on when I'm making these decisions. So to, to the members of the public, to the members of the council, who would rather spend money bailing out flood victims, please bring that proposal forward. Please get it warned on the city agenda. And while I will not be here after this meeting, full stop, I would happily come to a meeting and argue in public session for the council to adopt those options, because I do think that is our paramount responsibility. And after, if, first of all, if this money is spent, there is still a half, over a half million dollars in the special projects fund to invest in those projects. I'd strongly consider you to, strongly urge you to consider that. And if this fundraising campaign is not successful, which I also echo the comments that this has been a very inauspicious start to a public fundraising campaign, if that money is not, not returned to the city, but we get the gist of what I'm saying, if that money is not expended in the first place, I would encourage the council, just as I have for the past year and a half, to invest that money, the full 9.4, I mean, 940,000-ish that I think we have left in the ARPA money, to do that for flood victims. And if there were a proposal on the table right now to use $940,000 of special projects fund to bail out flood victims in Berry City, I would vote for that right now, and then we'd have to have another ratification meeting. But in the absence of another proposal, it, it's just not where we are. It's what I want to do. I've been unsuccessful, and I take full responsibility for being unsuccessful in lobbying three of my fellow councillors to go that route. But that's where we are. That's what I've tried to do, and this is the decision that's before the council.
Yes.
I think in light of what we've heard tonight, I've been keeping an informal count, and I've got it basically two question marks and 10 people against, one person for. I'm hearing loud and clear a request to put this on hold. I, I'm hearing Councillor Wazizak say, well, you know, I would be spending the money on making people whole. You know, if we're going to switch the conversation, then we should switch the conversation, but not spend or commit the 400,000. Councillor Spalding has reiterated that we have a limited amount of money. And it may sound like a chunk, but 500,000 is going to get us nothing in light of things like the DPW building in terms of what's under the ground. When we heard from the folks coming to discuss the river issues, one of the things I heard people say loud and clear is, we really can't invest in a big thing until we fix what's under the ground. We have too many problems with water, and it's coming at us from all directions. I'm, I would love to see us put this on hold for now. I'd love to see that building gone, but not at the cost of everything else.
Thank you. Yes.
I will bring forward a proposal within the next two months to spend money to make people whole who are in the North End, who have been flooded, to buy people out.
You can't hear-
Oh, sorry. I'm going to make a proposal within the next two months to use money to buy people out who would like to move out of the North End.
That would count as infrastructure improvement in Cozy Trust funds, which will likely be tick north of $2 million for General and $3 million for Hope, would likely be eligible for that. Council, a motion? Oh, I'm sorry, Councillor Guston. Excuse me.
I, I just want to briefly, first of all, thank everyone who came this evening to, to sort of share your, your concerns, your ideas for Berry, what you, what you want to see happen in our community. And I really, from the bottom of my heart, appreciate that, that level of passion and investment and commitment. And I've been listening and taking it in and, and thinking a lot. And, and I think the thing I keep thinking of is that we are in the deeply unenviable position of having to do all of the things, unfortunately, that we absolutely have to make a commitment to, to people who have been experiencing multiple floods. We have to make a commitment to deeply outdated infrastructure, to continued capital investments, and also things that look to the future. I would echo Councillor Wazizak's statements about this being, I, the word he used was an inauspicious beginning to a public fundraising campaign, but the public fundraising campaign would be another meter for appetite for the project. I, you know, I ran for council. I made the commitment to run for council because I wanted to address the flooding concerns in Berry City. We have now passed a flood resiliency plan that sets out clear strategic action steps to address a lot of the things that we have identified so far and provides follow-up points to continue to address future things. And I think we have seen progress. It's, it's never enough, and it's never fast enough. I will freely and fully admit that. But I think we have seen progress on that, and that we do need to continue to make progress on that. I, I look forward to Councillor Stockwell's proposal. It is on my mind, and we have updates. The manager and I have committed to scheduling updates on pieces of the flood resiliency plan for the next several months, that some of those updates will address key infrastructure points, some of which have been raised tonight, that we absolutely know we have to address. They will address housing. All of that has to be on the table at the same time. And it's a, yeah. So I guess I just wanted to address that, that I am deeply grateful to everyone who expressed their feelings, their considerations, and their perspectives on this, and also to just acknowledge the reality that we have, we have a lot to do and a long way to go. And we've got to keep making those commitments to, to doing, frankly, a, a little bit of everything that we can. So thank you.
Thank you. Jeremy Sparrow-Winn?
Yeah, I, I just wanted, I'm a little confused about why there's a rush here.
Why there's a, I'm sorry.
Rush.
A rush.
A rush?
Why the rush?
Rush. Why the rush? Right? It seems like there's, this, this circumstance isn't going to change materially in the next couple of weeks, in the next few months. Is there some particular reason why this needs to get passed now, when there's been so much public outcry over this, and when there have been so many proposed alternatives to dealing with this building, that a number of people here have expressed interest in pursuing? So i- is there actually a, is there a deadline we're trying to meet here or something? I, I'm not, I'm not understanding why there's a seeming need for urgency here.
Yeah, we're reacting to a request from BADC.
Okay. And so there's no deadline? There's no deadline whatsoever?
Well, there is a deadline with regard to the purchase option that they have executed.
Okay. And that deadline is how far from now?
Six months.
Six? Okay.
180 days from December 11.
Okay. So there's, there's 180 days to, why not table this? Like, that seems, it's like, it feels like this is, this is being pushed through. This is being presented as though we need to do this now. I'm just, I'm not seeing it. I don't understand.
Because that's the motion before the council right now.
And, and the, the council can choose to table that motion, can it not? The council can choose to vote it down now and take it up later, can it not?
That's not the motion pending before the council at this time. The motion pending before the council is to ratify the council's 1217, 24 decision to pledge 400,000 for the acquisition of 143 North Main Street by BADC, subject to a sponsorship agreement. That's-
Could a, could a councillor move to table the, the motion on, that's on the table right now?
Thank you very much for your comments. Mr. Stanek?
Well, it's asking-
Microphone, microphone.
Before, he spoke twice.
No, we're not. We're gonna, we're gonna wrap this up.
Well, before that gentleman spoke, I was just going to clarify my comments, having chaired a few meetings in my life and had a sitting on a few boards. When I suggested in my testimony originally that there be a pause, I should have made that specific articulation to be a motion to table, table the motion that's pending by the city council member. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd make that motion. Second.
I'm, we're still discussing the first motion. Yes.
That was totally legal.
Just table in the motion.
Huh?
Just table the motion. And she got a second.
I, well, I'm trying to get through all of the, I'm trying to get through all of the speakers. Would that be okay? Nothing's, nothing's going to happen. You can chill.
Jeremy already spoke.
Jeremy, did you still have your hand up or down? I'm not-
No, my apologies.
Let me move to Ellen Kay. Thank you for putting her last- Thank you for putting her last name up, Ellen.
Yeah, I'm not driving anymore. Yeah, I hope that you will, you will table this motion. I cannot abide the idea of putting $1 million into somebody's pocket, helping, helping do that when there is so much need. Great to think forward, but we've left people behind. We've had three floods. We are in terrible economic straits, as you keep telling us, but somehow it's okay to put this money in property owners' pockets for a blighted building. You've heard so much opposition and very articulate opposition and very articulate proposals here tonight, and to respect the citizens, the residents of this city, who took their time during a holiday week to come to an emergency meeting, and yeah, you had a meeting to talk about it last week, but it was behind closed doors. So this is the first meeting that we've been able to hear this. I support the motion to table.
Thank you. Counselor, you offered a motion to table?
Mm-hmm.
Did you offer a second?
I did.
There has been a motion made and seconded. That motion is to table, and I'm not sure if you can, boy, procedurally, now I got to think this through for a minute, because in order to ratify a decision, I just want to make it clear to the council that a vote of the council has to be ratified at the next duly-warranted meeting of the council. So obviously, if this is tabled, we didn't ratify it, and therefore it can't be ratified at all. So voting to table will be the equivalent of not ratifying the decision, because you have to ratify it at your next meeting. So it would have the identical effect. I mean, we can do it, but it would have, yeah. So there is a motion to table? Yes, I'm sorry.
Just a question.
Yeah.
So if we table it tonight, Teddy's resignation's already tendered, and we're going to have to deal with the same garbage we dealt with earlier today in a future meeting.
Not attending a future meeting.
I mean, no, no, because Teddy's resignation is unconditionally effective. He's made that... Excuse me, don't interrupt me, or you can leave.
I'm sorry.
Teddy's, because Teddy's resignation is effective at midnight this evening.
Tomorrow.
And he has made it, tomorrow? Well, that's okay too.
The 31st.
And he has made it very clear that he will not be rescinding, so essentially, a motion to table would mean that we did not act on it at our next meeting. So it would be, it would be the equivalent of a no vote on the motion that is currently pending. In other words, you couldn't, you couldn't pick it back up off the table because you would not have ratified the decision at the next duly-warranted meeting. So it's essentially a no vote. So I just want to make that clear, but a motion, yes.
It would be essentially a no vote, but that's not to say that someone couldn't bring it back up again. If BADC wants to come back and say, hey, we'd like to, we'd like to give you the option, here's some actual concrete plans, here's some actual concrete, we've raised this much money, or this is, we're going to give you the option to own the property.
I don't know, and neither do you.
Well, I think it could happen.
I mean, none of us know the answer to that question. If they brought up the exact same amount, the exact same motion, and it had failed, generally speaking, no, you can't. Someone could say, well, what about $399,999? And you could likely vote on that motion. So there is a motion to table, there's a motion to table, all those, everybody okay with voting it?
I would like to hear what the two people who have their hands raised.
Why? A motion to table is not debatable, so I don't understand.
They may have some point of information that we do not have here.
Mr. Hemmerich and Mr. Fenner, do you have some information that the council is not aware of with regard to the motion to table?
I do. I'm a certified parliamentarian. You don't need a motion to table, because as you just said, if you don't vote to ratify it tonight, it's dead. You don't need any additional motions.
Okay, does everybody understand that?
No. What did he say?
Mr. Fenner, I'm sorry. Would you mind repeating that one, one sec?
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did we lose you, Steve?
No, I'm here, sir.
Would you mind repeating that? I'm sorry.
If you do not vote to ratify, it is dead. There is no additional motion. A motion to table is redundant and extraneous. If you do not vote to ratify, as you just pointed out, Mr. Mayor, it's dead. It's gone. It's buried. It's over.
Mr. Hemmerich, did you, was there any other information you had to offer?
Yeah, but I'm not, not to speak to any parliamentary things. I was just wondering if there's, if there's any commitment from city council, if there'd be interest in following down what Mr. Stanek had to suggest about health order, because certainly cities and towns throughout the state of Vermont have health officers, including Berry City. If that building is as unsafe as Councillor Walsizak says it is, there should be a health order on that building, and there should be remedying, remediation and activities by that landowner, and so I'm hoping that somebody on this city council...
Yeah, we were talking about a motion to table. Sorry. Counsel, just to be clear, so a motion to table is not debatable. I mean, I've explained that if you, if the motion to table is approved, the council did not ratify the 1217 vote at the next duly-warranted meeting, so essentially, you cannot, you can't pick it back up. You have to ratify at the next duly-warranted meeting. So I just, I just want to make that clear. And in order of the, in the order of the vote, I have to, we have to vote the motion to table first, because a motion to table, again, not debatable, I just wanted to make sure that everybody understands ramifications. So do you? And can we vote the motion to table? Okay, there is a motion to table. All those in favor, the motion is presented. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Excuse me, I'm going to change my vote. I lost myself. And those opposed, I am a nay vote on table. Sorry. Counselor Guston?
Nay.
No? Okay, the motion to table failed. Now we will move immediately to the motion on the floor, which is to ratify the council's 1217-24 decision to pledge $400,000 for the acquisition of 143 North Main Street by Berry Area Development Corporation, subject to a sponsorship agreement. All those in favor of the motion to ratify, please signify by saying aye.
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 And those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
The motion carries. Counsel, I'm going to offer you...
Motion to adjourn.
All those in favor, the motion is presented. Please signify by saying aye.
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 Counsel, we are adjourned.